We'll have to take a motion to suspend the rules to take an agenda item out of order.
We have a visa. We're gonna start and then we're gonna go back to the old one, which is.
Let's start the regular school committee meeting. Let's rise up to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name's Secretary. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Mr. Lay.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Mia Rourke.
Here.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Seven yeas.
Section three minutes need a motion to approve the special and regular scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee meeting of May 1st, 2024, and to place them on the file.
Motion to.
Second by Ms. Do- sorry, second by Ms. Doherty. Motion by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Poste no? The ayes have it. Section four, permission to enter, 4.1. Permission to enter of May- oh, I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by by Mr. Bahu, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Mia Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Section five, memorials, 5.1. Retired Title I facilitator, Mary Scuff- Scuffhold. Can you dim the light? So I need a motion. I noticed that we have City Manager Goldens here. Thank you for being here tonight. And so I want to suspend the rule to take the agenda 9.1 out of order. So I need a motion, someone to put a motion by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Martin. Point one, 9.1 approval of St. Jean-Ducce purchase. If you may, Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Tom Golden, City Manager, 24 Monroe Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Thank you very much for taking me out of turn, and thank you very much to the committee members. I will say this, Mr. Chairman, similar to last night, under City Council Vice Mayor Yem, things are looking up here in the city of Lowell with the mayor gone for the last few days. So I'm sure I'm gonna hear about that later, but I'm here just to speak in favor of the purchase of the Jean-Ducce property. I think it's an extremely exciting opportunity for all of us. I think it shows a lot of teamwork, a lot of vision, and a lot of things that have been discussed amongst this city council as well as this school committee. I think it's an opportunity, once again, for us to partner as we have been partnering with the new superintendent. And I have to say, Mr. Superintendent, I've really enjoyed working with you and all of the things that have been happening here within the city. I mean, when you really start to think about the partnership between this school committee and the city council with the MSB Accelerator Repair Programs, with the monies that we've been putting forward for that, March of '23, it was $21 million, and just recently, January of '24, we mentioned we were lucky to get re-included into the MSBA Accelerator Repair Program to the tune of about $13 million. Other capital investments have been happening from the city side to the school side because truly, I believe that the school department and the city council, we are all one, trying to do the best thing that we can for the children of this city. So I am here on behalf of myself and on behalf of the Golden Administration to simply say, I am hoping that the purchase of Jean-Ducce will continue, will move forward through this body. After going through this body, it will be voted on by the city council. It is my intent in the capital loan order that we're gonna be putting forward in our budget, that we would be placing money in it to ensure that the Jean-Ducce building will be brought up to all the necessary DESI needs for that property. And once again, you know, the school department currently right now, I believe, is spending approximately $350,000, and I would love to be corrected if anyone has the exact dollar figure for rent per year. And I would think that that would be a welcomed bit of money coming back into the school department where we could spend it on our students. So from the administration's standpoint, I want to say thank you very much to the school committee. I know that I've spoken to a few of you about this, and we've talked about what is the betterment for the residents and, most importantly, the students in this city. And from my perspective, the purchase of the Jean-Ducce property will really make some real movements and continue this great partnership where we all are rowing in the same direction. And it really is giving us that opportunity to bring students back from Chelmsford as well as potentially bring other students in from other surrounding cities and towns. So, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, once again, thank you for taking me out of turn, and I'd stand here to answer any questions that I can appropriately answer prior to my own budget negotiations coming up. So thank you very much for taking me out of turn.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Lay and school committee members. I'd just like to echo what Manager Golden has said. If you recall, many years ago, we discussed the potential of building another school. There were talks of sites like where the new market basket is out in Patacaville and so on. Well, I don't know of any other sites available to build a school, and if we found a site, we would charge, we would pay in the tens of millions of dollars to develop a new school and many, many years. In the meantime, Jean-Ducce property became available, and this committee, or rather, the actual committee before this one, sought to explore that. I was frustrated at the time with the dilly-dallying and making it happen. And of course, now that I'm in this seat, I realize there's an endless amount of red tape involved. There's appraisals, assessments, there's funding, there's, you know, all sorts of codes and so on. The city manager and his team have guided me through all of that, and we wouldn't be at this point were it not for the manager's generosity. He really has shepherded it through, and I'm very grateful to him and his team. I also believe strongly that we will look back on this moment in 10 or 15 years' time and realize what a wonderful investment it is. I do as well urge you to vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Conway. Would you come up here? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna say that I'm very supportive of this purchase. Some time ago, I did make a motion on this floor, actually, to buy the building, and it's actually happening, so I'm very happy. And I want to thank Mr. Manager for your compliment. I really appreciate it. Do the best I could. Thank you. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
There's definitely a high need for more classrooms in the city of Lowell. We're renting space in Chelmsford. We're building modular classrooms behind the STEM Academy to the cost of $6 million, and what we're receiving is eight classrooms. What we could receive at the St. Jean-Ducce purchase is 30 more classrooms. It would cost us $2.4 million if we approved right now, and the city is indicating that they will pick up the renovation costs. I think my question about the renovations are sort of twofold. The first is, we're having a hard time renovating buildings within our school district because, you know, the Bartlett, it needs attention, lockers aren't there, bubblers aren't there. We have mold remediation issues over at Patacaville Memorial. We have some issues happening over at the weighing school. The good news is we have new roofs, we have new boilers coming in through MSBA, and they're spending money for us, and they're moving us in the right direction. So my question to the city manager is, I know that you have some money allotted to fix St. Jean-Ducce School in the first year, and I know it's a two-year process. So how can we ensure that this is going to be done? And, you know, not having other issues, plants that need to, or schools that need to be fixed, as well as budget issues get in our way, and then we begin to sort of wait, which could become an issue.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much, Committee Men, for the question. I think that in the last two years, I think we just need to look at the proof. The proof is in the pudding, where we've gotten very aggressive, this administration, as well as the men and women that sit before me, talking about this. I can remember many times, sitting even on Saturday, talking about how we need to do better. And I think that this administration, as well as this school committee and the council, is aggressively pursuing that. And I think what I had referenced earlier, Committee Men, is with the MSBA Accelerator Program, the $21 million in March of 2023, and then following it up in January of 2024 with another $13 million, to the tune of about approximately $35 million, which it's typically the 80%, 80%, 20% split. So the city would be on the hook for approximately, once again, $7 million. Mr. Committee Men, you're absolutely correct. There is always going to be a concern with us moving forward. But I think in the past two years, with the other capital investments that the city has put forth, and that being in our own capital dollars, the capital dollars of 2024 was $3.85 million, as well as capital 2023 was $2.3 million, which I think we're seeing that, I think "we," when I say "we," I mean the collective "we." The school committee, the council, the people of Lowell are seeing that we need to commit monies into our buildings. The majority of our buildings, our municipal buildings, are school buildings. And I would then further say, with the amount of money from ARPER, that I cannot, it was $7 million we put in, I can't say every dollar went into schools, but I can say that every dollar is going into municipal buildings. We obviously have a few that we need to deal with as well. From this point forward, I don't doubt you at all, sir, not one bit, but this is why we need to continue to push forward. It's exactly what you said, sir, earlier about the number of classrooms for the amount of money. I think this is going to be, quite frankly, something that we're all going to be proud of in years to come. When, and I say "years to come," Superintendent and I have discussed this. This could take us a year to two years, maybe a tad bit more, to make sure it's up to snuff. It's up to where it needs to be from DESI's standpoint, as well as the students. We are continuing to unravel things that are happening here in the city when we're bringing things back. We are making one heck of an investment in a high school right down the street, and I just don't see that we're gonna turn back on that. I think that this committee, as well as the city council, is forward-thinking, trying to get this accomplished. And, Committee Men, you're here to hold even my feet to the fire, to make sure that this happens. This is something that is gonna be vitally important for, I believe, for the future of our city, but the future of our students. So I hope I answered your question, but I will be putting forth in my own capital plan coming out this Friday. There'll be additional monies put in that, and then additional monies coming in from capital. Our capital plans have expanded. It is no secret that the administration has sought to increase revenue, which is by way of taxes, and we've done this so we can continue to increase our capital expenditures for our future so that our roadways, so that our buildings can be in a better situation than they are in this manner today.
So what I'm hearing is, we will get a full two-year commitment to renovate that building so that we can begin to use those classrooms soon and not have any delays while you're the city manager.
Delays, I want to always caution everybody on. You know, you never know what could possibly happen, but I want to make sure that this happens as soon as possible. If I could give you the exact date, Mr. Committee Men, as to when this would happen, I wish I could, but I just want to be realistic. We're in the process of putting in, I know we'd have to do things like elevators, and elevators can be challenging, but it is something that I'm fully committed to making sure happens for the betterment of the city.
Great, thank you. Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you to the city manager. Again, I applaud you for this project here, I think is extremely important. The thing that I would like to see happen, and I've seen it on both sides of the fence, that the communication can be broken, should we say. So I think that it's incumbent on us that both the city side and the school side, we work very, very close together. We work as a unit, we work as one, and I think by doing that, I think we have a much better chance of success all the way through on it. So I would certainly hope with you and the superintendent that we would be meeting on a regular basis so that this can happen, and it is needed.
I would agree wholeheartedly, Mr. Committee Men. When you talk about communication, somebody had mentioned to me, they're not sure if the city manager's ever come to the school committee meetings, and I'm like, why not? I'm just two doors down. Sometimes one, depends on where I'm sitting. But we've had the superintendent of schools at our meetings. I would be more than happy to come back here and discuss this at any point in time. Communication is absolutely the key, and Mr. Bahu, I wish I could tell you, you know, you've stuck it in my head here. I wish I could say it's gonna be 16 months and we're gonna be up and running. I'm just, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic that this committee will move forward. I'm cautiously optimistic that the city council will see this as a purchase, as a positive piece. And, Mr. Conway, excuse me, Mr. Conway. Communication is absolutely the most important thing for all of us, and I do sense that with this committee, and I think every single person, as I'm looking around, has my cellphone, and you're free to use it at any point in time.
Thank you.
If the will of the body wants allow, I'd like to speak something really quick from up here. I just wanna say I'm excited, and also, if possible, maybe we could have organized a tour of the building, because I don't think I have seen it, and I don't think many of us in here have seen the building. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I wanted to say I wholeheartedly support this effort because we do need the school building, and I think down the road, it will initially save us, as you mentioned, a good bit of money in rental. We can also grow the program, and I think it's an opportunity we should take. But I do want to point out that the ask is for $2.4 million out of the school district budget to purchase a building. We are typically not the owners of the buildings. We are the tenants. So I guess, as the manager mentioned, the proof is in the pudding, and I think as someone who has been watching the city and the schools for a long time, well before I got on the committee, I mean, I've been in Lowell for over 30 years now, and I can say that I have seen great strides, great improvements in our ability to work together, to understand our mutually shared interests in having the best public school system we can, not only for our children and the future of our city, but just for all of us, those of us who live here, who work here. So I'm putting it on faith that that relationship is gonna continue. I don't expect it to not have bumps in the road, or delays, or all those things that happen in the real world, but this is a major thing, for us to be taking $2.4 million out of our budget, which I want to remind my colleagues, this ESR money is done after this year. We're building this budget on $1 million in summer school program that next year we're gonna be paying for. So to invest in this future opportunity, the space, and what it's gonna mean for our programs and our staff and our kids, I think it's the right thing to do. So I fully support it, but it is money out of our budget, quite a bit of it. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
That as a motion to accept.
Okay, it's a great idea. Thank you very much. I think we're gonna benefit hugely from moving forward. I would just say, so we need to take two votes tonight, apparently. Our first vote would be, if you want to make the motion, feel free. It's right on the page there, if you want to pull it up.
So I would make the motion to authorize the expenditure of $2.4 million out of the 2023-2024 general budget to fund the city of Lowell's purchase of 50 to 68 Draket Street, Lowell, Mass, for the school department's use of the property as a school.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Need a motion to select the property site as a school building per Mass General Law C43 S34 by Mr. Bahu, second by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Mia Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Clerk, thank you. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for the time, and thank you very much to the school committee for allowing me to speak out of turn, and I appreciate it. See you also. Be well.
Section six, motion by Jackie Doherty. Request the superintendent report on cost and timeline to install PFAS water filtration systems in the schools. Ms. Doherty. Or second by Mr. Bahu, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this motion? We do not. Okay. So this motion came to my attention from students at the STEM Academy. They've been doing quite a bit of research, and I think they had a slide presentation. I think they're gonna be emailing it since they're not here personally. But to look at, especially where we're putting in the new water bubblers, and I don't have the, they did an excellent presentation, but I don't have the report in front of me, but the amount of these PFAs, PFAS, that's in our drinking water, and this idea of being able to provide filters. I don't know what the cost would be or what the timeline for implementation, but I thought that I would put it on as a motion to honor their voice and reaching out and trying to provide some environmental safeguards for our families and staff. So I'm not looking for you to do a huge amount of work, but this would be, you know, kind of like an investment.
Should we call back the city manager?
Right, that's a bigger issue, what they do at the water treatment system, right? As opposed to filters in the water system. But anyway, that was my motion, so thank you.
Anybody want to speak on it? All in favor, say aye. No, say no. Poste no. The ayes have it. 6.2 by Eileen Rossi. Request the superintendent to report on how mental health supports will be affected due to upcoming budget cuts, especially loss of behavioral support, social workers, and support staff. Also include the amount of mental health staff at each school currently and then for the '24-'25 school year. Second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Rossi. Can I hear you, Ms. Rossi?
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. This is a motion a student at Lowell High School had reached out to me about in terms of mental health and his concerns for how mental health is being addressed in schools, and I did notice there were significant cuts in the budget, so I figured. in the budget. So I figured it would be helpful to have a report to really just look at how many, how many schools will be significantly affected, and what's the plan to supplement going forward. Thank you.
Anyone wants to speak on it? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. 6.3 by Eileen Rossi, request the superintendent to work with proper staff at the high school to implement a school-wide academic support center for students to make up academic work, also providing a place students can go for help if they do not understand and need extra academic support. Second by Mr. Bahu. Ms. Rossi?
Yes, also another.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Rossi.
Another, I believe it was a civics project from students at the high school, wondering about implementing a study hall for students who may have had attendance issues, or may have work that they didn't understand, that maybe didn't feel comfortable speaking up in class, and a place for them to go to really make up that work, or a place to say, I really didn't understand this, can you help me? I know it was something that we had when I was in high school, and I think that it would be helpful for students to have, especially with the, the increase in the dropout rate, and just for students to know that there's some place for them to go for a little extra help on their, and they can go on their accord. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi. We also have registered speakers. Madam Secretary, can you call?
Ms. Torres?
Just state your name and address, please. Are you a student?
Yeah.
Just give me your first name and the, I guess, the school that you go to.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Elise Marie Torres, and I currently go to Lowell High School. I am in 11th grade. We are, we are working on a project in civics class where we identify an issue and try to make a change. We think that we should have a study hall. We are seeing that mental health and, and stress are affecting students. The study hall wouldn't just be a period to go to that all students have to partake in. Students can be recommended by teachers to go to this study hall if they believe this student is struggling or falling behind. Students could also ask their teachers to participate. This gives tutoring opportunities for kids who can't go before or after school. This is also an opportunity for student athletes who have practices and games after school. This also means getting taken out of their classes and getting home late. This study hall would allow them to catch up on their schoolwork. This could count as credit for students' classes. Also, if a student were to miss a day, and there happened to be a test or assignments in general, they could make it up during this study hall. But not just this. There isn't tutoring opportunities for other classes, other than the main ones, such as math, science, English, and history. So we think that teachers can choose to participate and help tutor. We think that teachers should keep the order of this study hall for the students. In conclusion, we think that this could really help students and reduce stress for them. We know that there was a study hall at Lowell High School in the past, and think it's, it's time to bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Aggie Mung?
Hi. Can I read from my phone?
Yes, just your name and school that you go to.
Okay. I'm Abigail Aggie Mung. I go to Lowell High, and I'm going to talk about the experience of me having study hall. So I didn't grow up, I grew up in Lowell, but I moved around my whole life. And at my old school, Monument, Great Barrington, it's in Western Mass, we had a study hall, and we discovered that it helped students, because I was one of the students who, like, struggled in school. And I did, we, they gave me a study hall, and I, they showed that my academics was, like, proving way more higher. So we want to come and talk to you guys to see if we can do it at Lowell High. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody want to talk, want to speak on it? Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion pass. 6.4 by Eileen Rossi, request superintendent to reevaluate having a police official at morning arrival and afternoon dismissal time at the McCalliv School. Second, near second, by Ms. Martin. Ms. Rossi?
Yes, thank you. There continues to be issues with people speeding down there, and there, and with parking in the wrong spots, and yelling, and parent craziness, from what I understand. So I, I know I brought this up a couple of times, but I really think it does need to be addressed, and there needs to be, right, and it's not even so much when the Robinson gets out, it's McCalliv School start and school end times, just so it can be a bit of an ease at that dismissal time. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rossi. Did we get all the speakers? Ms. Clerk? If the will of the body allowed to have an extra speaker, would that be okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, go ahead. Thank you.
I'm also another student from Lowell High School, currently a junior, and I'm here to talk about the same study hall. I understand that you guys had some concerns, because we do have a flex block, and students do skip, and I understand that, but it won't be the students, like, sorry, it won't be the students', like, choice to go to the study hall. If your teacher sees that you're putting in the effort to improve in your grades, they're going to give you a slip or sign you up to a 10. So it's not something that, like, students could just walk into, to skip class, or feel like they want free time. It's not going to be something like that. And thank you guys for hearing us out.
Thank you. Sounds like a great plan. Thank you.
Thank you, girls, for coming out and speaking.
We got all the speakers, right? Okay. 6.5 by Mr. Rossi, request superintendent, in light of current high education campus unrest, coordinate a meeting of the chief academic officer, the appropriate high school official overseeing the teaching of history, the head of the teachers' union, and a member of the city council to examine the curriculum and teaching of American history and civics, to examine if students are being taught about America's founding principles. We need a second by Mr. Conway. Ms. Rossi?
Yes, this is a, this is really, maybe I didn't word this motion right, but really in order to start a conversation with various community stakeholders in terms of how we're really teaching about, basically civics and American founding principles and so forth. And so that we get different perspectives from maybe a city councilor, maybe the history chair, maybe, you know, the, the union, that, so we're putting out all the perspectives in a respectful way to teach about America's founding principles, to ultimately benefit students and within their civics, history, civics MCAS scores. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma, Ms. Rossi. Anybody want to talk on it? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Section seven, subcommittees, 7.1. I need a motion to accept the report as, oh, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes of the HR, HR Labor Relations Subcommittee, meeting of April 30, of April 30, 2024. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lay. So the meeting did take place on the 30th, present with myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Del Rossi. We had from the school department Superintendent Skinner and Dr. Hall, our chief operating officer. I will go through this very quickly, because basically we were talking primarily about job descriptions, and those are going to be voted on later in the meeting, so I, we don't need to do it twice. I will just say, as we go through the, the titles, we did have a conversation around the enrollment counselor, shifting that to be what I think it basically was from the beginning, which is an additional guidance counselor position. We did move forward with lead security position at Lowell High School. We talked about the high school testing and assessment coordinator. That will be coming before the committee in just a moment. She says optimistically that the rest of the meeting is going to go really quickly. And then we also had a number of conversations leading up to this on moving our Title I position back to be a full-time position, and then creating, making a change with the deputy facilities director. So that will be increasing that salary by $5,000, based on a candidate's college degree, in hopes that we'll be able to fill that position effectively moving forward in the, in the new school year. After that, we did recess into an executive session for the purposes of launching our negotiations process with the teachers' union beginning that evening, and that is obviously an ongoing process. I'd submit that as a report of progress. Thank you.
Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Bahu. All in favor, say aye. No, opposed, say no. The ayes have it, approved. Section eight, reports of the superintendent, 8.1, entry plan findings. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Lay. School committee members, while there's nobody more pleased than I that our meetings run through very efficiently, there are times, I think, when it's worth our ti, our while to deliberate and to spend time on a topic, and with, I would suggest this is one of them. I will take some time, if you don't mind, to take you through some findings from a year's worth of analysis and study. I will be appropriately brief, if I, as much as I can, I'll try to get that balance right. It is important, though, I think, that I draw your attention to some findings that may or may not be new for you. So, let's see. I'm very grateful, in my introduction, I mentioned, I'm very grateful to be the opportunity to be superintendent. And when, when I began as superintendent, I made several commitments to you, the school committee, and to the school department and our community, and the entry plan findings is a way of reporting back to you on the, on those commitments. I'm slipping through various slides here relatively quickly. I think I mentioned before, I am very proud of our core beliefs in Lowell Public Schools. If I could highlight one tonight, I'd highlight the fourth one. Sustainable school improvement requires hard and steady work over time. I think I've experienced that, I've been fortunate to experience in my career, having been given a long lead of time at the daily school when I, where I was principal. I think that the benefit of steady leadership over time is, is noticeable, and it's worthwhile, that the work takes time. If I skip ahead a couple of slides, I can show you that I'm going to summarize briefly some findings, and then get into a little bit more depth further along. We have a number of strengths in our school system. I've chosen three to highlight. There are people in our country and in other countries who live in a monocultural society or monocultural city, and they travel, they travel abroad and to other places to witness what other cultures are like, and to see how other ethnic groups live. We have, in Lowell, a great mixing ground and, and a great variety and richness of cultures and ethnicities in Lowell, and in this particular case, I mentioned, 70 different languages in our school system. It's a wonderful city to live in and to go to school in. In our schools, in every school, there are models of excellence, both in leadership, and in teaching, and in supportive teaching. There is a particular strength in our schools around teacher-student relationships. Our teachers and our professionals in schools in Lowell really care about their students. I'll say more about that a little bit later. It really shows, and it's very sort of noticeable for visitors to our schools. We have some, also, some key challenges, and I've chosen three of those to highlight. We have quite a lot of students who join our school system midway through the school year, and we have students who leave our school system midway through the school year. It's important, because of that, that we have strong safety net programs. And safety net programs might sometimes refer to as interventions, supports, tier two, tier three supports, and so on. It just means in this instance that we have to be vigilant about those supports for students that are quite transient. Attendance monitoring is one of the very elementary ones for, for that sake. Many of our students, a high proportion of our students in Lowell, are economically disadvantaged students and multilingual learners. It means that we have to provide for them in ways that are not necessarily as primary in other communities. We have to be prepared to support families, as well as the students they, they send to school. And then the last one is about our classrooms again. We notice in classrooms that there's a lack of access to grade-level content. There's a great temptation, as a teacher and as a professional, to, to tamp down the rigor of lessons, to, is almost as an, an attempt to work with students and to make it easier for students to gain traction in a classroom. And it's a mistake. Students cannot reach high levels unless we teach them to a high level. This is, this chart is meant to give you a sense of our demographics in Lowell at the moment, and some trends. If you look, please, at the blue line. The blue line shows you that in the last six years, our student population has not changed a great deal. It was inclined to dip up until and through the pandemic, and now this year, our student population is growing very quickly. I'd also like to point out, if you look at the Hispanic line, our Hispanic student population has been steadily increasing, small increments, but it is increasing, while others are roughly steady, or in slight decline. I'd like to say a bit more about our strengths, and in particular, in this slide, our resources. The, the staff in our schools are committed people, they are caring people, and they are a tremendous resource to our community. We have lots of data capabilities these days, and that's a key strength. We're able to ferret out where we're not being successful, which students we're not being successful with, and therefore able to plan to help them to be successful. We have powerful databases and tools for doing that. We have people that know what they're doing and how to use them. And I mentioned, we have a budget. I, for one, believe that we are adequately funded, and I'm happy that we are. We have, and we now emphasize in Lowell, I'm emphasizing in my superintendency, collaborative structures, collaborative practices. No one individual in our school system, not the superintendent or any of the central office staff, nor any one teacher or principal, knows it all. We will be more successful if we work together, and we need, in order to collaborate, you have to have collaborative structures. And so these are several examples of structures that we have in our schools, and that we're maximizing this year, to work together and to build our school system together. I've also learned more this year than I ever realized in my career, how many and how rich a group of community partners we have to work with. Wadscar spoke tonight, he represents one of them. Fortaleza is on this list. So are many, many others. I've met with- I've met with, been privileged to meet with, the leaders of each and every one of these groups this year, and some of them very regularly, and we can benefit a great deal by our collaboration with them. Fitting that the city manager was here, because we also have collaborative partners in our city. I have worked with each and every one of these city officials this year with, I would say, great success. And I'm not going to dilly-dally and play games with you, but I'd love you to pin me on it and say, "Well, the parking director, Mr. Skinner, surely you didn't work collaboratively with the parking director?" And I did, and we were very successful in that, and I'll explain that some other time. But each of these city partners have been willing to collaborate and seem to be very much of a mind to find solutions with us. I won't go through this slide. If we pour through our data, our MCAS achievement data, which I think is very important, we can find wins in there, we can find growths in there, and we can be proud of accomplishments that we're making. More depth on our challenges. Let's look at the student mobility, please, a little more. So, on student mobility, this is just the last couple of years for your reference. Notice, for the sake of just a reference point, I've looked at only the students coming in and out of Lowell from October 1 to March 1. Believe me that there were many who arrived in September and many more who arrived in April. When I was putting this together, I just chose parameters that were, is a six-month time that we could look at. This year, 943 students arrived in Lowell within those six months. Many more if I expanded that. They were not in our schools at the start of the school year. 746 students have left. What I'd like to suggest, if I could, just for conceptualizing that, picture being a classroom teacher. And we think, we assume that the teachers teach the same group of students right through the school year, but in fact, they're not. In some schools more than others, a significant portion of the students in the class changed throughout the year. It's important to note on this next slide, another challenge, proportions, higher proportions of high-need students. So again, at that blue bar at the top is the same enrollment data you looked at before. If you look at our ELs, English Language Learners, and the proportion of our student body who are English Language Learners, it has been growing, and it's at its highest point at the moment, 29%. Almost a third of our students are English Language Learners. Students on IEPs is roughly steady, not growing or declining. Look at the number of homeless students. The proportion of homeless students has doubled in the time that I outlined here, six years. It's just an arbitrary amount of time, but in that six years, the number of homeless students has doubled. This is a point I want to emphasize, if I may. There's been some recent discussion in the community about the consent decree and a great outcry that we not abandon the consent decree. I think it's not appreciated, the extent to which the consent decree, though it's been followed, it's not up to, it's a tool that's not up to the job that it's intended for. Our schools are quite inequitable. On this page, I'm comparing two middle schools. Look for roughly the same size. Look at the line for EL students. One school has almost a third, the other 12%. The homeless population in one school is 15%, it's 9% in the other. The white population is roughly the same. However, in one school, there's a high proportion of Latino students, whereas in the other, there's a high proportion of Asian students. One of the factors about that that I'd like you to know about is that I think in one school, there's a great deal more economically disadvantaged students. It's not simply racial inequity, but it's also economic inequity. And students who are poor need and deserve a great deal more support than others who are more well-off. Before I leave this slide, I want to point out at the bottom of the page, some schools receive far more of the transient students than others. Some of our schools are heavily enrolled at the beginning of a school year with a bias towards students who are stable and who are going to stay at those schools. Other schools are less well-enrolled at the beginning of a school year, and so they have space for every transient child that comes. And they take in more students, and they have more students leave them. I won't belabor the point with other slides, but you see on this one, comparing two K-8 schools. If I just pick one statistic here, look at the one for EL students. 17% in one school, fully one-third of the students in another. And again, I won't belabor this page, but it's actually a little bit less of inequity in elementary schools, but still bears looking at, still bears looking at. So, the next part, I'd love to have a full meeting on alone, but I'll give you the salient points. This is about our classroom work and in our classrooms, what do we see? First and foremost, in our classrooms, we see students and teachers with a wonderful rapport in general. This data I cited from an instructional review done by a group called the TUNED. This was at the end of last school year. They noted it right away, one of the first parts of their report, and there's a summary of their findings on the page. They also noted that in 70% of our classrooms, this is K-8, there were connections to grade-level standards. But the tasks and the text lowered the rigor. So in other words, we have some really excellent curriculum materials. And because we have excellent curriculum materials, most of the time, the lessons are planned at grade level. Not all the time, they said here, about 70% of the time. But you can have a student reading a dense text, an appropriately rigorous text, and then you can do all the talking as a teacher, in which case the students are not engaging, are not being asked to think in a rigorous way. And that's what this is pointing out. There are examples on the page, and that first bullet point is talking about a second-grade classroom where the text that was chosen was not a complex text for second graders, it was too simple. If you look at the bottom half of the page where it says lowered rigor, that first bullet point as an example is talking about the teachers' overstraffled delivery. In other words, the teachers really spoon-feeding the child, or children in the class, and not depending on them to meet the level of rigor that they should. So this is a concern that we're highlighting. The next slide is math examples, I trust the committee will pour through at your own discretion. Ultimately, the result of these observations are that students in some of our schools, in all of our schools, they're not sufficiently cognitively engaged. Only in about two-thirds of observations, excuse me, only in about a third of observations are students on a grade-level standard and being called upon to work at a rigorous pace at that standard. If you look at the second bullet point in the ELA class in 4th grade, the lesson was completely teacher-led. Again, that's a teacher, sometimes we say in education, there's the teachers doing all the work in the lesson. When the lesson's over, the teacher's exhausted. The students are happy and they walk out, right? We need to turn that around and have the students be doing the cognitive lifting. Again, I'm happy to talk at length about these slides, or in this or another forum. I'll finish and bring you back to, through any questions if you have them. On this slide, number 27, it's discussing the fact that grade-level material was observed in the classrooms and indicated that our curriculum materials are sound in most part. Students produce verbal and written language, grade-level language, a third of the time. Again, it's another version of students not being called upon to speak and to interact in a way that they're using grade-level vocabulary and grade-level skills. Let me finish this part on a high note. This last slide on this section talks about strong examples in every school. In any school you go to in Lowell, you can find pockets of the best teaching you're going to find anywhere. Really strong, which is a really wonderful trait to have, because we've got models of good instruction for others to follow and for us to point to. The rest of the analysis is not relying on outside. We've also had instructional rounds for the last few years that highlighted, there was a focus on student engagement. Our best success with student engagement to date is around attendance and bringing schools, students back into school. They can't be engaged in class unless they're there. So that's been a win for us. But in the classroom, we have to, we've yet got work to do around how to engage students appropriately. We have particular concerns in literacy, and here we're citing some data that indicates, if you look at that second bullet, mid-year I-ready data indicate that 83% of students are not reading at least one early band of their grade level. In other words, they're not even at the beginning band of that grade level. Some of this does reflect pandemic. When these students were in elementary schools, in kindergarten through grade 2 or 3, learning a lesson from Zoom, which was not effective. And so we have catching up yet to do. We're aware of it, because we are tapping our data to find these flaws, and then we will talk about how we're going to address them. I'd like to briefly finish with some recommendations. The recommendations on this first page, page 32, our recommendations we're already working on at Central Office. It just happens by coincidence that we had what we call today a DILT meeting, District Instructional Leadership Team meeting, where it's a relatively new forum where we bring together staff from Ms. Crocker, Ms. Desmond, and other staff from their area's curriculum. We actually work as well with a couple of state officials from the Department of Education. They come to our meetings as well, and they're impressed with our work. This is a forum where we're building out responses to the data that we've seen, some of which is listed on this page. We intend next year, for example, to conduct a comprehensive assessment of our literacy curriculum and instruction, and we have several steps that we're taking in the meantime. I am going to skip forward and finish at this additional recommendations. This entry plan findings, I prepared approximately a month ago. In that time, we've already had the school committee restore early release days, and we're very grateful for that permission. We have a new calendar for next year with early release days restored. We're already planning for their proper use. We think it's time that we begin thinking about a new strategic plan, a plan that can attack some of the issues that we're addressing here. And the plan that we're working on right now expires next year anyway. So we'd like to begin, at least in the summer or early fall, with some rigorous assessments of our needs and outlining a new strategic plan that can help us to address them. On the third bullet point, this will not be easy, but I'd like to, maybe I'll talk about the third and fourth together. I think we need to rezone. We have looked at it already. We don't have a plan to offer you, it's fairly complex. But I believe we can develop a better zoning model. We could have smaller zones. We have right now two zones in Lowell, and then a few schools that are called citywide schools. We believe we can construct three or four zones that will be diverse within them, so much so that the schools will be more equitable. This is not neighborhood schools, but it's smaller zones. If, for example, one zone was north of the river, it would, we believe that it would reduce the amount of busing required. It would be some busing between, you know, different sides of Patucaville to Centerville and so forth. But we think we can do a better job. Obviously, we need to develop this, and we need to give the school committee some options. But we have to come up with a more equitable plan than what we have right now, because it's not equitable despite our consent decree. One measure that could be taken in the interim, that we'll come back to the school committee about, but you can think about it, would be to enroll our schools at the same level right through. So for example, in the summertime at Family Resource Center, enroll all schools to, say, 85%. And then as more students come in, enroll them all to 90% and so on. If you start the school year and all the schools in Lowell are enrolled roughly to, say, 92%, well then each school has a similar number of vacant seats. So transient students and migrant students that come in during the school year don't all go to the one place. I'm giving you a simplified version, it's more complex than what I'm saying, but I'd like to propose something of that sort to the school committee, and we'll come back to you with it. I'll take any questions, I'm grateful for the time you've given me.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Ms. Delay. Obviously, you know, some interesting information. I would cycle back to the school assignment, and I know you're referencing that you're going to be coming up with a different approach and that you'll be bringing us back to that. I mean, I had thought we had gone through, certainly in the last couple of years, where we were reserving seats. Seats weren't all getting filled, we were keeping seats open so that as students came in later in perhaps the registration process, they'd still have options to get into all the schools. So I mean, so this isn't a new problem, I thought we had worked to already address that.
To my knowledge, Ms. Martin, there's no actual policy that says, so, for example, if there were open seats at some school that, let's say, the Daily School, and there are open seats at the Robinson School, the two, right? If the Daily School had two seats and the Robinson School has, you know, 22, you'd have no real policy that supports you telling that parent, "Sorry, we want to send your child to the Robinson and not the Daily." If there's only one seat available, you know, the parent's entitled to choose that school. So I suppose I'm saying, Ms. Martin, that I don't know of any policy that would help us actually implement what you described. Excuse me, Ms. Crocker reminded me, the kindergarten lottery is one version that does make it more equitable for where students are placed for kindergarten, that's true. But that's the one example we know of.
Okay, 8.2, strategic goal. With the will of the body, you want to go ahead with the whole report, or do you want just a summary? Or just put it aside for the next subcommittee meeting? Ms. Doughty?
I think we should get the nuts and bolts of this report, because it is one of the budget decisions that we're going to be making about this program. So I'd like to hear the high points.
Thank you, Ms. Doughty, I appreciate that in large part, because we do have people who have made time to be here tonight to present. May I have Ms. Phillips, please, introduce the report?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So this evening, we are going to have our coordinator of the Hispanic Student Success Task Force present on behalf of the community and staff. The, we have a coordinating agency, which is Fortaleza, who helps to coordinate between the district and the community. And so we have Wadzkar Gomez to present for the task force.
All right, thank you. Hi, everyone, I'll try to keep this brief. So I just quickly want to read out loud our vision. So the vision of the Hispanic Student Success Task Force is to unite various Hispanic-Latino stakeholders within the Lowell Public Schools community in order to develop and coordinate services to support the elimination of opportunity gaps impacting Hispanic and Latino students and support the overall success of Hispanic and Latino students within Lowell Public Schools. So the task force is centered on elevating So the task force is centered on elevating the voices of the Hispanic and Latino community in Lowell in order to obtain feedback on needed current issues and policies impacting Latino students' success and identify strategies to support students based on the input of these integral stakeholders. So here, I want to take a quick moment and just highlight the members of the steering committee. So they're composed of staff from the Equity Office. So we have representation from the Family Leadership Institute. We have district support specialists, the CLSP coordinator, the Student Resource Center, bilingual family liaison. And then we have community members that are parents. They represent different organizations, different fields, business, housing. You know, so it's a very diverse, you know, group of people. This is just the steering committee, but we also have other members that are part of the community that also, you know, participate throughout our meetings and efforts. And, you know, to my earlier point, because this task force and the people in it, we've been able to look at issues that our students are facing from various angles. And because of the mission of this task force, we've been able to include voices that have not been included before, leading us to newer ways, newer ways of looking at the problem, leading us to the progress that we've had thus far. Let me see. So we've identified three goals as a team, and our first one is addressing the ninth grade credit completion through strengthening family engagement and family communication. The second one is implement a college and career-focused family leadership strand within the Family Leadership Institute. And then lastly, conduct a feasibility study for the integration of dual-language magnet program within the district. Kind of skip through this real quick. So we've used, you know, we wanted to include as a team, you know, parent voice, parent involvement, and also student voice was things that we felt strongly about. And so we addressed these problems, the issues, in two ways. So we implement a parent engagement strategy to assess parents' awareness of the problem of the ninth grade credit completion and identify ways families can partner with teachers and students to increase course completion. And then the second one, conduct a student-centered study to understand the problem of academic success from students' perspective and barriers preventing Latinx students from pursuing advanced academic pathways in high school. Let me skip through this. I'm just going to skip through some of these. Slide is at nine. So one of the things that we've done was, through the Family Leadership Institute, was have workshops for parents where they were able to, you know, learn how to access different resources, including like teachers, guidance counselors, Aspen, and so on. So this is some of the feedback that we got from some of those workshops. And then another thing that we also learned was that from our community outreach was that our phone calls have to be intentional. It can't just be just picking up a phone. We have to be intentional about who's making the phone calls, what is it for, and really try to build a relationship with the person, the parent, or whoever is on the other end of the phone with, you know, some intentionality. And, you know, that also, the other piece is that, you know, the proximity matters to students. So if parents are receiving phone calls from someone that they know, someone from the school, and has built that relationship with them, we've seen more success with those interactions. Let me skip through this. So then another of our goals that we were addressing was the Latino students being underrepresented in advanced coursework. So across advanced courses, they have been disproportionately underrepresented in, especially in STEM courses. Most of the Hispanic students that enroll in AP courses enroll in Spanish AP. So they're not having access to, you know, advanced science, math, history, and all these other subjects. Let me see. Go through this. So we conducted a, so to include student voice, we conducted a few focus groups with eighth graders. So we tried to, we wanted to be proactive about the issue, so to address the issue before it happened. So we conducted a focus group with a few eighth graders across the district. And some of our findings were there was a lack of information from, like, from the students. So we, so students are getting their information from their siblings, or an adult in their family, but not really getting information about advanced courses from anyone in the schools. And therefore, then they're perceiving, they're having, they're making their own conclusions and perceptions about college and whether they can afford college or not. And then we also found that they also, that families have a huge influence in their lives, and families do, you know, that families matter to them, and that's where they get most of their guidance from. So to that end, we want to highlight the importance of parent engagement because we've noticed that, you know, that was something that came up from our research was that families have a huge impact and influence on students' decisions and how they perceive, you know, the world around them. And because there's been a lack of communication and information from schools, according to, like, you know, based on AP courses, they're sort of making these decisions based on, you know, what they're seeing from their families. And I want to also highlight that Lowell High School is seen as a second choice, is not their first choice. And part of that is because of the lack of information that they have from the resource that Lowell High School can provide to them. A lot of students highlighted that they would rather go to the Voke. And I think, you know, the Voke that probably does a better job at, like, contacting students and having these, like, informational sessions early on. And I think we want to share information with students early on about Lowell High School. Let's see, there's some things. And then our third sort of bucket, we looked at how can we implement a dual-language program at our district? And that came from the, a subcommittee back in 2022, where we were looking, you know, and that's based on data that we've seen where students are having language barriers and just overall lack of academic access. So we invited the community, so we did this community district learning process where we invited members of the community, parents, different people from the community to do school site visits, where we looked at specifically at a school at the Lim Public Schools where they had a dual-language program. And this is sort of like the breakdown of their model, which it was helpful for parents to see, it was helpful for us to see, people from the district to see as well, like, the benefits of seeing students highly engaged and motivated to learn. And then we also have a dual-language study group. So we have these five modules where we also have community members, not just Spanish-speaking members, but also, you know, these different languages, where we are learning what would it take to implement a dual-language program in our district and sort of also educate, inform parents, other educators, and other stakeholders into the, you know, invite them into the conversation. So that's some of our next steps. So some of our next steps are, we have the Center of Applied Linguistics, they're reviewing the feasibility of it. And also, we're going to conduct another site visit as well, inviting more parents and community leaders. And hopefully, maybe we can, some of you from the school committee can join and see one of the schools and have a larger discussion in June as well. And then so our next steps is to, as a steering committee, is to continue outreach and expand our membership in the task force, also expand our parent involvement as well. And we will have a second annual State of Latino Education in early June, which we would, you know, like to invite you all to attend. And finally, the task force will assess the year's progress to our stated goals as we identify goals for the upcoming school year. So I do want to end with briefly, you know, so as, you know, as you may have noticed, like, we have been looking at issues differently and parents, right? And that's due to our parent involvement, engagement efforts that we've done. And, you know, parents and students have lived experiences that if we ignore them and, you know, we would be missing key information in the equation. And all of our efforts have been, you know, towards amplifying those voices, you know, including voices of students and parents, because they're the ones being impacted by the policies. So therefore, you know, they should be the ones, you know, in the process, telling the stories and, you know, in the process of change, right? Of changing the policies with us and not the other way around. So I just want to thank you all for your time and open up for questions.
Thank you, Wadzka. Any discussion? Okay. Move on to 8.3, enrollment report. Any discussion? All right. 8.4, Ms. Conway? Can we switch?
Motion to response, Dominic Lay.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. So I just want to thank Ms. Crocker for a very good report, actually. I really enjoy reading this, and I read it twice, about the performance, about the students who took the advanced course and also the breakdown by ethnics. The data looks very good. I don't know what, on the first page, 55.2 on the second paragraph there, I wasn't sure what that 55.2% of what of, is it of the, of the student who took the, who are in the high school or, so 52.5, over half of the population, school population are taking advanced coursework. Is that how I read correctly?
This is the superintendent you're asking?
To superintendent, to you, to superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, and thank you for your question, Mr. Lay. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Crocker, please. Ms. Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Lay. This is the Department of Ed report statistic. It tracks 11th and 12th graders who take advanced coursework. So 55.2% of 11th and 12th graders at Lowell High School take at least one advanced class.
Thank you. Just to support Wadzka's data is that the Latino students has the highest percentage of taking the advanced course at the high school. And somehow, this, the number that I got on this report looks very good. However, it's a little bit contradict to what the superintendent reported earlier in regarding to the low number of students. Anyway, we can talk about that later in more detail. I'm just, I just want to say thank you very much for a very good report.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
8.5, response regarding cellphone policy update. Mr. Lay? Ms. Stel Rossi?
Any comments on that? Okay. 8.6, motion to, by Mr. Bahu regarding the roof updates.
Sure. Thank you for the updated report. You turned it around very quickly for me, Mr. Skinner. Yes, looks like, you know, we're getting a new roof and some new boilers over at the Robinson as well as the Shaughnessy in the McCaveen. Looks like we have a kind of work being done, being started this June and hopefully ending in August. And we have a new roof over at the Weg as well and the McCalliff School. So it's very exciting. It's good to see this information. I'm also hoping that the state helped us pick up some of the costs. If I remember correctly, I did get some information that they did, and it's good to see this in our report, as well as new boilers being supplied in five of the schools that are mentioned as well. So this is very exciting, and I look forward to seeing this work done by September.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bahu. We're delighted to give you the report. I'd like to point out that this is further evidence of the collaboration with the city that's paying off. And as you heard the city manager tonight talk about ARPA funds and other state funds that are, right? I do believe that we have a competent city administration, and of course, a competent school administration at this stage. But the collaboration between us, I think, is paying off in big ways and big projects. What is disheartening sometimes is that there are a number of small projects that tie us up. You noted in the KPI report recently, I think Mr. Lay had asked for an outline of all open tickets, work order tickets in schools, and that was given. Well, our local newspaper picked up and ran a front-page story on that. And what it omitted was that 2,500 work orders were completed in schools by DPW, 11 DPW workers in very short few months. Like, they are working like crazy to get our work orders closed. 2,500. Twenty-five hundred were closed in recent months. And, but what you see in your report that was picked up in the news are the ones that were not closed. My, my point being these, this evidence of roofs being repaired, roofs, whole new roofs for schools, new boilers in schools, and work order tickets being closed. It's, it's, it's an impressive clip. And again, in my experience in Lowell, an unprecedented clip. Still not enough. We'll still press for those water bubblers and we'll still press for other repairs. But I'd like us to acknowledge where there's been success and where there's hope.
Eight point seven. Respond to motion by Mr. Bahu regarding community outreach.
Sure. And just to piggyback on what you said a moment ago, Mr. Skinner, that we truly are making great strides here in the Lowell public school system. And it's really very exciting to, to be a part of it and to watch it all unfold before my very eyes. Things are progressing really well here and I'm grateful to be a part of it. Thank you so much for this report about the, the community outreach that we are looking to embark on. It seems like, Ms. Phillips, you gave me a wonderful eight-page report that is full of information about what we have done. You know, using websites, using the social media. It looks like our social media has four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand views. Well, we used to only get fourteen thousand views in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. We have, we're working with the press and that seems to work very well for us. People are understanding it. We're, you know, looking to do maybe more open houses. And we have open houses, which is something that we do at Great Lowell Tech, which is really wonderful as well. And I see that you have some recommendations. Some of the recommendations are to do some value propositions, which is unique ways to engage with parents and engage with students so that they can begin to see, you know, the excitement or why to come to our Lowell Public School District. So there's a lot here and I can tell that there was a lot of effort in putting all this together to begin to reach out to our communities, our churches, our festivals, and really ensuring people know about all the great happenings that we have here in Lowell Public School. So I thank you for this. I look forward to watching all of this and realistically even being a part of it. Please don't omit me in any of the things that you are doing. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Eight point eight. Report on motions. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Lay. To the committee members, I want to again be, just for clarity, explain, we don't remove motions unless you determine that they're completed. So we mark them as completed on these monthly, excuse me, quarterly reports. So if you notice here, there's a motion marked completed, you're free to tell us that you'd consider, you'd like us to keep it open and you'd like further information. Otherwise, this is our way of telling you that we believe the motion has been responded to and when and that it's completed. So, and, and it's a slightly new format with, with, with data on ones that we're working on.
Ms. Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to say all that my completed motions, I agree, are completed. Thank you very much. I'd also like to do two positives on this. One's on the report, one isn't. But love that the handicap ramp at Shed Park was completed. Thank you so much for your efforts. And I know the city was key in getting that done for our students who'll be able to participate in their field trip this spring because now they have wheelchair accessibility. So that's really good news. Also, I wanted to point out that I received a picture of one of our new water filling stations with a hearty thank you from the Bartlett School, which has been high on my list for about three years or more about the facility needs over there. So that was wonderful news. That's not on the report, but I just had to throw it out there. And then I want to, if I could, end with a constructive. I had a motion, I want to say it's listed as ongoing. It was in March regarding the attendance monitor positions that I think are severely underpaid. And I know that we have some money in the suspense account, which I'm assuming there are other salary increases that the superintendent is looking at. I just would like to get that information. We had a, I believe I had a hundred percent support on that motion. And we agreed we were going to get it as part of budget deliberation. So I know that we are just winding up with that. I would just kindly ask that we have that specific information. There may be other ones you're working on, that's fine. But for these positions, we have already lost one. I'm aware it went to DCF, I think, for a twenty thousand dollar increase. These positions are important to me. I think that we have seen progress in how they've been helping to turn around attendance. So I would like to just remind you that we did have a full committee support on getting that information for the, this particular role as part of the budget. So I would like to see if we can get it for our next meeting, definitely. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Doughty. You will have that information for the next meeting. We did budget for it. We, we happened to talk about that budget line tonight earlier on, that it'd be, it's in the suspense account. We have funds set aside for the increases. We were simply waiting for the budget to be passed. As soon as that budget is passed, you'll have that in your next meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just wanted to say you can certainly remove my completed motions from the list. The only one that's ongoing is the ad hoc, request for the ad hoc subcommittee with the, for school naming. But I'll follow up with the mayor on that one at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you. I threw you to the superintendent. The, the one on the partnerships with UML and MCC completed. I would assume that's going to be ongoing. That you'll be giving updates on that?
Certainly. The, the motion was completed, Mr. Conway. We'd be happy to give you updates at any time. Sure.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
Sure. And seeing that we're touching on motions, I appreciate all that you've done. But of course, Chapter seventy-four Volk Ed programming, I know that's going to be something that we will be ongoing doing to ensure that we can begin our Volk Ed programming. I know we have a meeting coming up soon with one of our advisors. So if we could just sort of make that an ongoing motion just so that we can inform the public of all the excitement that we have starting Volk Ed programming here within Lowell Public Schools, as well as informing the school committee of the, the direction that we're hoping to go in.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
We need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, eight point one through eight point eight, as reports of progress by Ms. Doughty, second by Ms. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Nine point one, we already have. Go to nine point two. Approval of job descriptions and permission to post high school testing and assessment coordinator. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway? Five ayes?
Nine point three. Approval of job description and permission to post Lowell High School lead security. Need a motion to approve and post motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Nine point four. Approval of job description and permission to post Title I Director by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Doughty. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Need a motion to approve the placement of junior. Am I right?
You know, the first one is the facilities.
Facilities. Oh, yeah, yeah, skip one. Okay. Approval of job description and permission to post facilities. Need a motion to approve and post by Mr. Bahu, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Need a motion to approve the placement of junior custodian within the facilities department by Mr. Conway, second by Ms. Doughty.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Nine point six. Consideration of change the substitute rates of school year twenty-four and/or school year twenty-five by Ms. Doughty, second by Mr. Bahu.
Is it going to be for twenty-five or?
For twenty-five.
Yeah, okay.
School year twenty-five. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi?
I apologize. So we're talking about the change in substitute rates?
Substitute rates for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, so start with the next fiscal year, not this fiscal year?
Ah, next year, yes. Year twenty-four, twenty-five.
We, Mr. Lay, excuse me.
Superintendent?
The memo actually gives the committee an option. If you wish to start it sooner, that's entirely up to you. But the sooner we start this, the, the more funds we save.
Ms. Martin?
I mean, I, I do think it's unrealistic to plan to start this within the current fiscal year. I don't see how we make that happen with, with the way we, you know, with our payroll and everything else. I just think that would be far too challenging. You know, and I certainly think it's the right move for us to be moving into this more reasonable, more reasonable rate. I mean, we're going to be taking a vote in a little while. That is, that is jaw dropping in terms of our substitute costs. And I'll say it now to save time, maybe later, that, I mean, there is a huge attendance issue. If we are looking at, at hundreds of thousands of dollars, more and more that we're spending on, on substitute teachers, we need to be dealing with that issue in addition to just reducing our rates. Thank you.
Anyone else? So, um, do we have a?
So approving the change for substitute rates for FY twenty-five.
By Ms. Martin.
By Mr. Ross.
Second by Ms. Doughty. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Nine point seven. Requesting approval for months work year for Air Force J ROTC instructor. Need a motion to approve a two-month work. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Doughty, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Nine point eight. Need a motion to approve the mural projects at the Stockloser School by Mr. Bahu, second by Ms. Doughty. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Nine point nine. Need a motion to approve the request for a corporate, cooperative girls hockey team by Ms. Doughty, second by Mr. Conway.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Nine point ten. Budget transfer. Need a motion to approve the budget transfer of three million nine-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand by Ms. Doughty, second by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Ms. Martin? Did you want to talk? I apologize. Thank you. Didn't see your hands, sorry. Ten. Convention and conference request, overnight request. Need a motion to approve the convention or conference request by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Conway. Ready for roll call?
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Section eleven. Professional, personal. We need a motion to approve the professional, personal by Ms. Doughty, second by Ms. Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absent.
Anybody want to have any announcement? Motion to adjourn by Ms. Doughty, second by Ms. Martin. Adjourn.
A five-minute recess and we will go back to our budget.
Okay, five minutes recess and go back to the budget meeting.